Conference on Activating a UN Special Session on Disarmament. It's a huge honour to have you all with us this morning. Just a reminder to our online audience that a French translation is available on Zoom. Just click on the interpretation function at the bottom of the screen. So we're very, very grateful to the distinguished guests here for representing their governments and institutions from Uruguay, Guatemala, Indonesia and the Holy See Dicastry for promoting integral human development. We hope that many more governments will join our growing global constituency to advance the agenda for general and complete disarmament. Their participation is of crucial importance. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our speakers. First, His Excellency Alvaro Merzinger, Ambassador of Uruguay to the United Nations in Geneva. Let's hear his statement now.
Have a good day. My name is Alvaro Merzinger. I am the ambassador of Uruguay in Geneva. We're very proud to be invited to share some thought with you in this important panel and important topic. So we congratulate for the idea to celebrate that kind of meetings regarding arms control. So now we have the review my speech. We thank the SCAP Weapons Project for the invitation to Uruguay to join this conference. My country is a firm supporter of general and complete disarmament as the way to achieve long-lasting peace and development. Almost 45 years after the first special sessions on disarmament took place, many of the conclusions reached in this report still hold true today. The imperative to disarm continues to be valid and as urgent as it was back in 1978. By now, it is proven that the accumulation of weapons, in particular nuclear weapons, does not lead to a peaceful war, but rather constitutes more of threat to our collective security. The more nations arm themselves, the more tension grow around the world, a fact that leads to lack of confidence and instability. As a member of the treaties for the provision of nuclear weapons in Latin America and the Caribbean, better known as the Treaty of Tlautalco, and therefore a country of peace in the region of peace, we see your initiative as a catalyzer for a session long overdue for the international community and more timely than ever in the current state of affairs. A quick glance of a map of the world where nuclear weapons free zones and nuclear weapons states are despised reveals that those who are armed, the most are the ones who are still more bound to engage in conflicts that may affect the rest of humankind. Nuclear states have a bigger responsibility in this regard. We are also at a point in time when technology developments are being weaponized. On the wrong premise, technological advances to weapons have benefits over other type of weapons derived from the ability to more precise with respect for the target, which is in fact a fallacy. No weapons are good, and using them as a means of defense is a lesser evil that states are entitled to, by which nevertheless at a risk both for domestic and for international security. Also, many disarmament agreements have been negotiated so far. It seems that there is not conviction in the international community that is necessary to disarm. Any effort to promote a collective awareness of the advantages of great international cooperation in general and of disarmament in particular is welcome, and the SCAP Weapons Initiative goes in that direction, for which it has our full support. In 2009, Oscar Arias, then in his second term as President of Costa Rica, introduced the Armed Trade Treaty to the United Nations with this word, and I quote: "I would turn today to see that everything has changed except this: peace continues to be a step further away. Nuclear unconventional weapons still exist despite the promises. It is up to us to ensure that in 20 years we do not awaken to the same terrors that we suffer today." I am not ignorant of the fact that the biggest arms dealers in the world are represented here, but today I do not speak to the arms manufacturers, but rather to the leaders of humanity, who have the responsibility to put principles before profits and enable the promises of a future in which finally we can sleep peacefully, end quote. Ten years have worn by since President Arias's speech, yet he wore a solid plaque of it in 2022. Let us hope that his appeal is heard, and then ten years ahead of us deliver on a word that put peace before war and developable before weapons. Thank you very much for your attention. I wish you a successful meeting. Have a good day.
Thank you very, very much Ambassador Merzinger for giving such a strong message stressing the urgency for a UN session on disarmament. Next, it's my honour to give the floor to His Excellency Jose Alberto Briz Gutierrez. He's Ambassador of Guatemala to the United Kingdom. Ambassador Briz Gutierrez, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Considering the protocol observed, I would like to first thank the organizers of this event, as well as SOAS University of London for hosting us here today. As representative of Guatemala, it is an honour to participate in this conference part of a larger effort of the Strategic Concept for Removal Arms and Proliferation Initiative. In the past few months, we have witnessed events that remind us about the importance of the disarmament agenda and of the core objectives of the United Nations as established in its charter. In this regard, I wish to express our solidarity with Ukraine. Guatemala has condemned in multiple international fora the illegal, unjustified and unprovoked invasion to the sovereign territory of Ukraine by the Russian Federation. We stand in solidarity with the Ukrainian people as they deal with the devastating consequences of such genious acts. It is therefore highly appropriate to recall that the only guarantee to safeguarding humanity is the prohibition and elimination of weapons of mass destruction, as well as the correct regulation of trade and use of conventional weapons. Only general and complete disarmament can achieve stability in favor of international peace and security and prevent the violation of international humanitarian law and humanitarian disasters caused by armed conflict. However, current challenges facing disarmament and non-proliferation makes these particularly difficult. The complexity of the current international scenario and international security environment, the emerging threats to international security, including the rapid advancement of science and weapons-related technology, the lack of awareness by governments and societies in general regarding the importance of disarmament, and the lack of results within the United Nations system to create new disarmament-related international instruments or strengthening existing ones are only but a few examples of obstacles to overcome in order to reach our common goal of a world in peace. Multilateralism and cooperation have proven their worth, especially after the lessons learned as a result of the pandemic and the importance of tackling international problems in a united front. These elements added to a strengthened political will in the disarmament and international security efforts should guide us, and nothing better to prove it than the convening of a fourth special session of the United Nations devoted to disarmament. It is important to note that the special sessions of the United Nations are dedicated to a very specific topic because of the relevance of the issue. The convening of SSOD IV would give this matter the attention it deserves and would be an opportunity to discuss general and complete disarmament. Without doubt, there might be discouragement from a group of UN member states if the focus of the special session is as extreme as to promote such an ambition objective of a complete and general disarmament. However, it is equally important to emphasize that the other side of the coin is extreme. As well as an old-out war with nuclear weapons would wipe out human life from the face of the earth, not to mention that the use of other weapons of mass destruction and certain conventional weapons cost the life of thousands of people every year. One however might ask, what about the Conference on Disarmament then? The Conference on Disarmament was recognized as a single multilateral disarmament negotiating forum of the international community, but it hasn't approved a program of work for more than 20 years. A special session on disarmament could revive the discussions on multilateral instruments, a discussion that now more than ever is needed to preserve peace and international security through the means of dialogue and negotiation. It goes without saying the relevance that the General Assembly has had on disarmament, especially with examples such as the Comprehensive Task Ban Treaty, the Arms Trade Treaty and the Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. In this regard, it is important to highlight the leading role taken by civil society in promoting and achieving the adoption of the latest international instruments on disarmament. For Guatemala, as a country with a peaceful vocation and a firm and longstanding position in favor of general, complete, verifiable and irreversible disarmament, we think clearly established deadlines, this is an important issue. Guatemala is a proud founding member of the Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons in Latin America and the Caribbean, Treaty of Tlautalco, the first nuclear weapons free zone agreement, positioning the region as pioneers in rejecting the existence of atomic bombs through international law and consequently an important ally on disarmament issues. This year, we celebrated the 55th anniversary of the Treaty of Tlautalco, and Guatemala will hold a course on disarmament and non-proliferation from the Agency for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons in Latin America and the Caribbean, Opanala. Guatemala is also party to most of the international treaties on disarmament, and last June, the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Mario Adolfo Bucaro Flores, by instructions of the President of the Republic, Dr. Alejandro Yamatei Falla, deposited the instrument of ratification to the Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. We affirming our commitment with nuclear disarmament and non-proliferation. At the same time, it is important to mention Guatemala's support to other relevant matters such as conventional weapons through the United Nations Program of Action, the Arms Trade Treaty and the SIFTA Convention. Pope Francis recently expressed that, and I quote, "The use of nuclear weapons, as well as their mere possession, is immoral. Trying to defend and ensure stability and peace through a false sense of security and a balance of terror ends up poisoning relationships between people and obstructs real dialogue." Guatemala shares this feeling. The world needs a boost in the disarmament architecture, as you may know. Despite month of August, after four weeks of negotiations in New York and after two years of delays due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the 10th Review Conference of the Non-Proliferation Treaty didn't achieve consensus in its final document. As a cornerstone of nuclear disarmament and non-proliferation, we perceive this as a very bad signal to the follow-up of the previous commitments of the Review Conferences and evidence of the slow or little progress in the political will of states on the aspiration of the global objective of a world free of nuclear weapons. Now an objective more necessary than ever. To conclude, Guatemala have used the disarmament machinery as a vehicle to bring the international community to a destination, that is international peace and security, and complete and general disarmament is one of its components. We applaud and support today's efforts in bringing together different stakeholders from all over the world, civil society, think tanks, academia, governments, among others, to promote dialogue and put words into action in favor of a fourth SSOD. Since 1995, the General Assembly has been requesting the celebration of a fourth special session, and Guatemala supports and shares the urgency to convene it, in which the agenda assures the balance between both nuclear disarmament and conventional weapons. It is urgent to reactivate the disarmament agenda and prevent disasters across the globe. The life of our future generations depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you Ambassador Briz Gutierrez on that message for the need for disarmament to achieve peace in our society. And now over to you, Councillor Riando Sembering. Councillor Sembering is Coordinator for Political Affairs at the Embassy of Indonesia to the United Kingdom. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Good morning, Excellencies, dear friends. I would like to thank Professor Dan Plush of SCAP Weapons and SOAS University for inviting the Indonesian Embassy to this important and very relevant discussion. It is a pleasure to be here. We welcome the nature of this event where academics and civil society take the lead in the conversation in pushing the disarmament agenda. We also take note of the draft treaty introduced by the previous speakers. It is a comprehensive draft, and I suppose many countries would want to study it before making comments. The support for and broad participation of the civil society at this event, I think speaks to the urgency for progress in disarmament. It is this sense, it is this sense of urgency that we need to echo in the multilateral community, especially in facing the fundamental changes of today's security landscape. And the comprehensive approach of general and complete disarmament has the potential to manage these challenges that our current regime has not been able to fully address. Open source research contributes in knowing more about the realms of today's security threats, including by increasing transparency in armaments. In today's situation, especially with the crisis in Ukraine, Indonesia cannot be more convinced in the urgency of nuclear disarmament, which presents the most pressing challenge in advancing the disarmament agenda. It is also timely in the wake of the failure of the recent Non-Proliferation Treaty Review Conference to adopt an outcome that speaks to this urgency. Indonesia has always been a strong supporter of nuclear disarmament. However, I believe I'm not a pessimist if I say that recent developments have been disheartening. We are witnessing the re-emergence of nuclear arms raids and rhetoric of nuclear weapons use in conflicts and a severe weakening of the global disarmament architecture, as I said, demonstrated by another failure of the Review Conference to come up with an agreement. And also, we see a widening trust deficit between the possessor and the non-possessor states, as well as a growing ignorance on the humanitarian and indiscriminate impacts of nuclear weapons explosion. Under these circumstances, nuclear disarmament is most needed, and the global nuclear disarmament architecture must be reinforced. The idea of convening the fourth special session of the General Assembly on Disarmament, or SSOD IV, is not something new, and Indonesia is certainly not adverse to the idea. We believe that we must also examine the intended purpose of such a meeting. Does it intend to push for progress? Positions, as we know, positions of many key countries are quite entrenched, and a change of venue unfortunately may not translate to a change of stance. And another question is that, does it come out of frustration with the Conference on Disarmament? Despite its current gridlock, well, the CD has had its success in the past, and it is a proof what can be achieved when the international communities have both their urgency and the machinery to work together. Just to name a few, I think the Conference on Disarmament and its predecessor has been instrumental in the creation of an important mechanism of disarming weapons of mass destruction, including the NPT, the Biological Weapons Convention, the Chemical Weapons Convention, and the CTBT, the Comprehensive Nuclear Task Ban Treaty. Coming back to the SSOD. The first SSOD was in 1978, was considered a success in progressing multilateral nuclear disarmament diplomacy. It provided for the establishment of the Conference on Disarmament. But more often than not, efforts, multilateral efforts to curb the use of nuclear weapons still end with a deadlock. And I would like to put the emphasis here on the sentence, curb the use and the approach of building blocks in nuclear disarmament discourse. My view is that the building block approach was not created with progress in mind. It was created to block it. Literally, building blocks are more often than not built to block. We cannot secure progress if we can only commit to negotiate a building block without concrete commitments to the end goal, that is elimination of nuclear weapons. This is apparent in the Conference on Disarmament's deadlock as it tries to find progress in nuclear task ban and negative security assurances. The same is true with the recent focus on the NPT RafCON, on proposal of a nuclear risk reduction, or NRR, which was put by the nuclear weapons states and its allies during the negotiation. It was intended to become another building block or step which wants to be seen by its advocate as portrayed as a progress without having to touch upon actionable commitments, timelines or benchmarks to disarming nuclear weapons. And before the draft outcome document was blocked, some language about the NRR could be agreed between the negotiating parties. It was to link, and more importantly, to base risk reduction upon considerations over the catastrophic humanitarian consequences of any nuclear weapons detonation. And this is where the humanitarian rationale comes in by creating a strong narrative that are first sensible in terms of cause and benefit analysis, even in a realist perspective, and also a narrative that is human-centered in its view of security. And based on this humanitarian rationale, Indonesia, we see the adoption of the TPNW as an important progress in disarmament diplomacy due to its role in devaluing nuclear weapons and evolving how states view security. As I have mentioned, Indonesia is open to initiatives in the progressing nuclear disarmament through the SSOD IV. We are going to listen to today's discussion with interest and would like to offer several points for discussion, among others. First, would reactivating the SSOD be any more sensible than revitalizing the Conference on Disarmament? Second is that would SSOD IV have a different mandate than that of the CD? The third, how would the draft treaty on the general and complete disarmament complement the existing ones, including the NPT and the TPNW? I think it is important that we do not reinvent the wheel and strengthen the mechanism that has been agreed. And the last points for discussion is that with the draft treaty, would it still be necessary to negotiate a comprehensive convention on nuclear weapons? So these are some of the thoughts that we offered for the discussion today. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Councillor Riando Sembering, for your message on why a treaty on disarmament is so urgent in today's current landscape. Our next speaker is Dr. Gabriela Vega, who's reached us from the Vatican and is bringing us a message from the Holy See Dicastry for promoting integral human development, where he works in disarmament affairs. Dr. Vega, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Sanita. Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure and an honour to be here with you today. Excellencies, dear friends, I am pleased to be here on behalf of the Dicastry for promoting integral human development. Allow me to begin by thanking Professor Dan Plush and the SCAP team of SOAS University for their work on what is perhaps the most sensitive issue of our time, promoting global disarmament for long-lasting and just peace. I wish specifically to convey the most heartfelt greetings of Cardinal Michael Cherny, prefect of our Dicastry. The Dicastry is proud to remain actively engaged with the SCAP Initiative, following last year's event, advancing integral disarmament in time of pandemic. A jointly organized webinar that saw the participation of the Secretary of State, prefects of other Dicastries, and Pontifical Council of Holy See, among others. Such high-level participation was not by chance, but rather a sign of the genuine esteem that we have for this initiative. Today, it is clear that the issue of disarmament is more urgent than ever before. Yet, the concept of disarmament, or heaving arms control, is often dismissed from the international debate, considered to be unrealistic and naive, and suppressed by political interests. This was seen in the recent failure to agree on a final document during the review of the Non-Proliferation Treaty. We came together again to advance this crucial cause, which, as recently stated by Pope Francis, may seem paradoxical to many. He recalls, and I quote, "We need to remain aware of the dangers of short-sighted approaches to national and international security and the risk of proliferation," end quote. To avoid this short-termism, we need to reopen spaces for dialogue and rethink our understanding of security. As Cardinal Parolin explained during last year's webinar, and has the Holy See as repeatedly emphasized since, a correct concept of security calls into question elements not only of a political military nature, but also of an ethical, moral, judicial and socio-economic nature. This is what we can rightly describe as integral security. However, we cannot have security without reciprocal trust, and we will not have trust without real dialogue. As Pope Francis explains in his encyclical letter Fratellituti, and I quote, "This trust can be built only through dialogue that is truly directed to the common good and not to the protection of veiled or particular interests," end quote. The world needs all kinds of dialogue, inter-religious, political, cultural. We especially need to engage those who think differently from us if we want to achieve lasting peace. Unfortunately, even international organizations, the quintessential place for dialogue, are stuck and blocked by the unwillingness of some to engage in understanding and addressing the root causes of our common problems. Things bring me to the core of this conference, the call for a special session on disarmament at the UN General Assembly. The Dicastry truly shares the spirit of this proposal. Global problems need global approaches, and as we are observing today, states by themselves cannot fully guarantee their own security. Proposals that look for a shared and concrete solution to such a fundamental issue must be encouraged and praised. To conclude, to build peace, we need dialogue and trust. Weapons erode trust and build fear. The SCAP Initiative, aiming at a general and complete disarmament process, represents an interesting and commendable proposal in the right direction, and the Dicasry look with favor at its developments. Thank you again for invitation and for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel Vega. Thank you, Dr. Gabriel Vega, on stressing why governments should support disarmament and the need for dialogue. We’d also like to convey our greetings to Bishop Nicholas Hudson, who is here representing the Bishops Conference of England and Wales. Thank you to all our distinguished speakers for the strong messages of support you’ve given us here today, and for just being here, for your participation. And remember, anyone listening online can support us to join Scrap or send a message to your government stressing the importance of a U.S. Special Session on Disarmament. Now, I’d like to open the floor to questions. If anybody’s got a question, we’d love to hear from you.
Yeah, my question is to, I think, quite all the representatives here, and after these impressive speeches, what do you think, which role can the non-aligned movement play in the preparation of such a fourth UN session?
Is there anyone who’d like to answer that question?
Shall we take it in turn?
Yes. Councillor Semmering?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the questions, and I have to admit, I was not expecting to have a question on the non-aligned movement, and I think my colleague from Indonesia might have a more wider knowledge of the impact that the NAM movement can play. But what I would like to say, having worked within the NAM in some previous postings, I think it’s a movement that, within its principles, it contains and it strives for complete disarmament and nonproliferation. And I think that it is important that the countries, the members, we, the members of the non-aligned movement, work together to try to come up with a strong position to move ahead, not only on the multilateral treaties that we participate as a grouping, but also in promoting a fourth special session on disarmament. I think that the movement has a key role to play in all these efforts. Thank you.
I think there’s another question somewhere, yes, over there.
Thank you for the most stimulating and impressive presentations. My question would take us from the global to the global environmental, global poverty aspect of what we’re about this morning. There seems to be an obvious link to be made between the vast amount of money spent on weapons across the world, the harm war does to the environment, and the world food crisis. The cost of living crisis which is now upon us will simply make the world food crisis worse. So it raises for me two questions, really, which I’d like to put to any members of the panel who would care to respond. Should groups like the ones we represent do more to encourage global environment forums to make the impact of weapons and of war part of their discussion? And how should we make the cost of weapons part of the cost of living discussion also? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I’ll just hand over to perhaps Councillor Riando Semmering. Perhaps you’d like to answer that question?
Thank you for the questions. Very briefly, if I may refer back to the previous question about what the NAM could play, I think, yeah, Indonesia is uniquely positioned because we have been holding the position of coordinator for the NAM Working Group on Disarmament in New York for, well, the last couple of decades. And I think speaking from the conversations that I have had with colleagues in New York, NAM is such a large grouping, so it can play, definitely it can play a very important role in, you know, in advocating any initiative. At the same time, the size also presents a challenge, and there needs to be a coordination at working level, and everything must be agreed at the Coletting Bureau in New York. And anything that NAM proposed has to be agreed by consensus, and you would appreciate that for such a large grouping, this is one of the biggest challenges. But definitely, NAM could play a role in advocating any initiative, including the one we are discussing today. And just to touch briefly on the second question, I think, indeed, for example, at the TPNW, I think there is, there has been a link established between disarmament to environmental concerns, that is, environmental remediation. And I think everybody can at least see the group argument in the link between disarmament and sustainable development. You cannot have the latter without the former, so it is a strong case to push for disarmament. And as I also mentioned in my remarks, the humanitarian rationale, it is, it is very, it is a strong argument, which is quite broad in appeal and universal. It’s a bit difficult to argue against humanitarian appeal. And I think the TPNW has shown that it can be a very persuasive rationale in pushing for the disarmament agenda. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on the floor? No. In the meantime, I would just like, yes, I was just going to say, yes, we’ll hand over to Dr. Gabriel Vega.
Thank you. If I may, on the second part of your question, I had the opportunity to speak with Professor Dan Plech, and he rightly understood that, at the end, nuclear disarmament is to avoid a faster way to destroy the environment. So there is a clear link between environmental policies and the interest for the environment and climate change, and the interest for disarmament. They are strictly linked, not only from an economical point of view, but also because when we are not able to build trust on a certain issue, it becomes more difficult to build trust on others. We don’t live in echo chambers. Governments speak with each other on many different issues. So if we want to achieve a global solution on climate change and food security, we need to find a solution to disarmament, nuclear and conventional disarmament. So the first, we can contribute to this firstly, recognizing this link. This is the first thing that we have to do, because in the global debate, this is not something that is clearly recognized by everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would you like to come in? So I just have a question here from an online listener to the debate, and he is Michael S. Goodman, who says, “A concern which I have is that various of the governments represented here, that’s Uruguay, Guatemala, and Indonesia, indeed possess no nuclear weapons, but the fact is that that hasn’t prevented serious legacies of internal violence and human rights violations in the respective 20th century history of those various republics.” And I’ll hand you that question, Ambassador Bries Gutierrez, first.
Yes, thank you very much. I think that the question refers to the recent past in Guatemala, and we signed a peace agreement. It was an internal conflict. I think many countries in the region, in Latin America, had internal conflicts, but we haven’t had in the region a war between countries, as devastating as other regions have had. And we are committed, as a region and as countries, to complete disarmament and nonproliferation. And we’re making our efforts to build our societies within the framework, in the case of Guatemala, within the framework of our peace agreements. It is not easy when resources are limited and resources are sometimes deviated to other priorities in the global north. But we do, are committed to fulfill the peace agreements of Guatemala and create a more equal society. It is a generational changes, you cannot change from one generation to the other, and a lot of awareness raising, a lot of education needs to take place, and we are committed to that. Thank you.
Dr. Gabriel Vega, would you like to add something to that? Councillor Semmering?
Thank you for the question, such an interesting question. They say that diplomacy begins at home. At the same time, I think what is happening in one’s domestic constituency should not stop, you know, the foreign policy apparatus of that country to be active in the international forum. And Indonesia, like many other countries, certainly, we have a challenge, internal challenge, in terms of managing some, you know, security challenges inside Indonesia. And I think it is the commitment of the government, including at the highest level, to tackle that challenge with the greatest respect to human rights. And that should not stop Indonesia to be active at the international forum, especially at urgent and most pressing issues such as our common endeavor for disarmament. That’s my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Semmering. I just would like to ask if anybody else got a question to ask? If not, I will say thank you very, very much to our guests who’ve been abs— Ah! Oh! No, we don’t. We’ve only got one at the moment. Ah, Dan wants to say something.
May I just briefly reply to the number of very interesting points made by Councillor Semmering, who has already continued informally outside the forum here. Thank you. You made some very interesting questions, which perhaps we can’t just deal with informally right now, but we can more substantively outside of the hall. The CD, you know, has its agenda in theory and not in practice. And that agenda in theory is, I think, restricted in terms of what the opportunities may be that present ourselves today. Clearly, the international situation requires new or new-old initiatives again, and the fourth special session is there, on the books, ready to go. So, no, we don’t know exactly how it would turn out. It may be a disaster, there’s plenty to say it would be, but then, you know, when we protested and said, “No missiles in Europe,” in the 1980s, everybody laughed. Government, when we said, “Well, let’s talk to this obscure poet in Czechoslovakia, Václav Havel,” the British Foreign Ministry said, “Don’t be silly, what a waste of time, it’ll just annoy the government.” When my colleagues reached out to dissidents and trade unionists in Poland, Lekvolecze, similarly, our Western government said, “Don’t waste your time, you’ll annoy Warsaw.” Well, we did that, and dramatic change came, and we had an INF Treaty and zero missiles. So, speaking as an activist, I would say, this is not a spectator sport, you can’t just take the agenda as given, you have to move things. More concretely, we all know, we characterize it, that there is a diplomatic trench warfare in the NPT and elsewhere around Article Six, in which the weapon states say rhetorically, perhaps, “We can’t do anything on nuclear because also we have to do something on general.” And there was a comma in Article Six, which, in terms of the First World War, one might characterize as the no-man’s land. There’s one constituency putting for nuclear, another constituency who doesn’t want nuclear using perhaps the excuse of general to hide behind. I think moving the general debate forward can have that diplomatic advantage of outflanking that decades-old trench warfare at a diplomatic level. But more concretely, a number of, and I don’t, while I’m a strong supporter of the TPNW and of nuclear disarmament all my life, there is a reality that states with nuclear weapons have concerns about conventional forces, non-nuclear forces, which to some extent the nuclear disarmament movement doesn’t give us sufficient attention to. So, in the interest of common ground, as well as political or diplomatic rhetoric, there is a great deal to move forward in that conventional realm, and on control of missiles in particular, which is a sort of bridging technology, to meet the concerns of weapon states and their allies in a comprehensive way. And that we have track record of success in this area, if only we remember it. So I’m very happy to have this in more detail, but you put out some questions, and I think it behoved me to give some response on the floor before we close. Thank you very much.
Professor Dan Plech, thank you very much. In the meantime, we’ve had loads of questions online, and there’s a question from Senator Mary-Lou McFeadron. She’s from Canada, and she’s saying, “Are there specific tasks that parliamentarians could undertake to move forward on the fourth special session at the United Nations?” And I’ll begin with perhaps Dr. Profess—sorry, Gabriel Vega, yes. Apologies for that.
Thank you. It’s a tough question, difficult to answer. Maybe I would really like to hear from Professor Dan Plech, his opinion, because—
I think Henrietta on the platform did just, to urge your government, Canadian government, to support the fourth special session at the UN. That is the direct call, I think, from this meeting.
Yes, it is. I’d like to, obviously, Henrietta, if you’d like to carry that, yes, that would be great.
Okay, so I’m just going to repeat what Dan said, but on a microphone, so that the virtual participants can hear. Scrap has developed a call for action, which anybody, parliamentarians, anybody can sign, advocating for the fourth special session on disarmament. Would also encourage you to take it to your parliaments, if there’s space and appropriate fora for that, to get conversations going and try to get momentum going. We recognize there are structural obstacles and barriers in terms of attention, that there’s a limit in time and attention that people have got for policy issues. And as the panel has outlined, this is a very complicated political time. But, yes, parliamentarians can support the vision, build momentum towards it through their own parliaments and through our call for action. Have I missed anything, Scrap colleagues? Okay, thank you.
We’ve got another question here, actually, from Ayun Michael Johnson, who says, “I’m Ayun Chairperson for the Defense Committee in the South Sudanese Parliament,” and he says, “We all agree that possession of both nuclear and conventional weapons is a threat to mankind. Weapons have been acquired on assumptions to protect nations or individuals from external threats and are used by manufacturers as a source of wealth. What message do you have to the beneficiaries and to the end users?” And I’d like to start off with Ambassador Alberto Bries Gutierrez to answer that question.
That’s a tough one. I don’t know, I think that I would say to everybody that they have to think of the impact those weapons in society have, how they deter or deviate resources from other priorities and more pressing priorities within those societies. I think that will be the message, is think about the impact of the trade or what you’re doing has in your own family circle, even in your own society. No one is free from their destruction. Thank you.
Yes, we all have a part to play in this, don’t we? And I’d like to give that same question to Dr. Gabriel Vega.
So I agree with the ambassador. We cannot think that we are untouchable by this risk of destruction. So we have to recognize that this kind of issue, global issues, have only a global solution, and we are part of the world, we are part of the human— solution, and we are part of the world, we are part of the human family. So we cannot imagine ourselves as independent. No one can save, no one is saved by himself. So we need to cooperate and also to understand if we are part of the solution or part of the problem. This is something that is difficult to admit, more than to understand many times.
That's very true, isn't it, that each one of us can play a part? And each one of us can play a part by joining SCRAP or just writing to your government and saying, "We want, we want a UN special session on disarmament." That would really greatly help. Counselor Riando Sembering, would you like to add something?
Thank you. I don't have a fancy closing remarks. However, I think what, one of the things that we could do to push disarmament agenda is to bring it to the personal level. More often than not, talking about nuclear weapons is seen as something strategic in the purview of states, big actors. It is, it is important that we bring it to the personal level. First of all, like I said, on the humanitarian imperative, to remind people that it concerns everyone, it affects everyone, it is indiscriminate. And also, I think, as we move further and further from the World War II, where nuclear weapons were actually used in combat, there is a growing naivety about the impacts of those explosions. And the younger generation, where ignorance is a bliss, of course, but there is a need to keep reminding people of the, you know, the devastating impacts of these weapons, weapons of mass destruction, as the name implies and suggests. So, thank you.
There's a question there, right? Thank you.
My question is, sobering thought is that today, we elect is the wrong word, today we have imposed on us a new prime minister who adores nuclear weapons. The question is, can one, when we await the names in her cabinet, it is just the kind of tiny percent chance that there might be one individual, for example, X or Y, or Tugendhat, to give him his name, one of them might just be amenable on the margins to precision targeting, if I may use a metaphor. Can, is there any way, this is possibly aimed at Dan Plesch, really, who mentioned something like this last night. It's good and important. I shall certainly write to my Member of Parliament, who is going to, who is not my favorite person, Theresa Villiers, but I won't name her. And should we be thinking about precision targeting of the occasional grown-up who might be found in those government circles?
Thank you very much for that. I, thank you very much for that. We'll just have another question there.
Yeah, thank you very much. Mine is Ben. I work for the United Nations Association here in the UK. We're a UK charity committed to disarmament. And just following on from that last question, actually, just my personal hope is that Theresa May gets, our esteemed incoming Prime Minister gets in touch with some of her roots, her CND roots, and actually gets back in touch with some of her, her own sort of previous positions on nuclear disarmament. My question's actually to the panel specifically about the special session. As a UN organization, we're, you know, I've got a soft spot for UN processes, and this is an interesting UN proposal that could really make some progress. But I'm wondering why it hasn't happened for so long? We talked about the third special session happening decades ago. There's any number of great reasons and causes that have put disarmament on the agenda and the concerning rise in global military spending especially. So my question is, you know, why has it taken so long? What is that block or that building block, as someone described earlier, that stopped it happening over the past 25, 30 years? And is this a live issue that groups of states are calling for and that's actually sort of on the agenda with, you know, plans and proposals for how it could be framed and sort of make a positive contribution to all the sort of plethora of existing sort of processes and disarmament sort of machinery? Thank you very much.
Perhaps Professor Dan Plesch would like to answer.
That's a question to the panel, but...
We'll start...
Maybe you could respond to Tony's comments, and then all the panelists could give their final responses to everything, yeah.
I'm one in favor of talking to the conservative where one can. Sometimes I think in SOAS, people would rather talk to Taliban than to Tories. So I think we need to get over that, get over ourselves that. The expert diplomats will know better than I why it hasn't happened. But I think broadly, for much of the last 20, 30 years, people saw progress in disarmament. Though we had the end of the Cold War agreements, Gorbachev, et cetera, European agreements, we had the Amstrey Treaty, we had the landmines, there was succession and hope. And now much of this has been put into the shredder, and yet, and now we face fear. People say, "Well, we have to wait for the right climate for disarmament." Well, to my mind, in my experience, the climate that gets disarmament is fear, and people are frightened again. I'm sorry I'm taking too much of this room.
Thank you very much, Professor Plesch. Perhaps I'd like to let Ambassador Gutierrez answer that question as well.
Well, thank you very much. I think the path is set. There has been agreements to convene this session. There has been work done on the Open End and Working Group. It is very difficult when countries get distracted by other global, probably more pressing issues. And I think that one of the tasks that we have to continue doing, and I think I mentioned about that in my remarks, and in the previous panel, they were explaining about the work they are doing at the grassroots levels to raise the awareness on the importance of, on this issue. It was also mentioned about how the global attention has gone to the climate change agenda, and how we are all, we all know nowadays, we open the newspaper and it's always there. There are always news about how that is impacting our world and our lives. And I think that we have to reach a level similar to that, raising more awareness within our societies about the importance of this issue, to be able to help the governments that sit in those negotiating rooms to feel the pressure to come to agreements and continue moving forward. It is a very complicated agenda because of the conflicting interests between the member states, the money that those interests move also, and the fears in some countries about what we've been talking about, the threats, the perceived threats that they have from neighbors or from other powers or influences in the region. So I think that we have to continue raising the awareness within our societies. I commend the efforts that are being done by the SCRAP initiative and SOAS, and as governments don't capitulate, continue pressing within the UN system. Multilateralism is a very slow work, as you know, but we cannot stop doing it because we don't see the progress that we want to see at the pace that we might want to see. So I think that if we all continue working together, and we pull civil society, academia, the think tanks, and we, the governments that are in favor, we will eventually get to move ahead in the United Nations system. That's the way multilateralism works. Thank you.
Thank you for that positive message. Dr Gabriel Vega, would you like to add something?
Just to say that again, I agree with the ambassador. We sometimes have the idea that the United Nations are detached from our reality, are detached from the ground, from the people. This is not really the case. There is a huge distance, but it's not impossible to communicate. How we can communicate, as the ambassador was suggesting, raising the awareness on the topic, just as we have seen has happened with the climate change. This is the path, in my opinion. We have to help any kind of initiatives that push for the creation of a movement similar to the one on climate change. At least, this is what I believe.
Dr Gabriel Vega, thank you. And again, a reminder that, you know, you can just join SCRAP or send a message to your government or your MP, and you can, you can help by doing this. And a final answer from Counselor Riando Sembering on that question.
Thank you. I think I agree with what Professor Plesch also mentioned. If we look at the previous SSOD sessions, we have had three of them, 1978, '82, and '88. But the first one was the only SSOD seen as relatively successful, and second and third was seen as failures. And then he mentioned about the end of Cold War in 1991. I, this is a conjecture, but I'm quite confident that it changed the whole global security landscape and also the dynamics at the negotiating forum at the UN. And then he also mentioned that the CD had some considerable success, and I think it also influenced the mood at the negotiating table. We had the, after the end of the Cold War, we still had the Chemical Weapons Convention in 1993 negotiated by the CD, although then we have the CBT in '96, and then we have been having this gridlock for a couple of decades at the CD. But I think all those factors contributed to the questions, why it has been taking so long for this fourth session, the special session. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Riando Sembering. I think we've come to the end of our debate and discussion, and it's been an excellent session, I think. We've all learnt something, we can all take something back with us, and I hope we get lots and lots of support for SCRAP. Thank you, everyone.